Very good.
So, open your hearing.
Okay. The motion to convene the public library board trustees.
I'll second.
And you step down, Ron.
I'm the chair.
Sorry for the mention.
It's okay.
I throw you the motion.
Yeah. Go.
Okay.
Second, chair, second votes. And Ron Potter, I.
Okay. Now, you just want to present it to the board of selectmen?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of library trustees, the trustees make our recommendation to approve of the library director contract for Mr. Mark Prochnick. The contract, which we just discussed in executive session, models the exact conversion of the contract that was from prior library director last spring. And a few changes, the starting salary for the library director as of December eighteen is sixty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Provides greater flexibility for the library director to work on Saturdays if needed. And the contract, as approved in executive session, this is a type of previous version that inadvertently referenced the wrong national law, which requires a library contract, contract with liable director. The contract follows.
Great. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for the Titan Library Director position of Mark Prochnick as presented this evening.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron is in aye. Sir, congratulations. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, library trustees will adjourn, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm the chairman of the library trustees meeting.
I'll sit down. Chair, a second motion, you can vote. Ron Potter, I.
Lights and.
Great. You guys are all set.
Thank you.
You can stay if you like. Nothing is going to be a reason to. Sure. Thank you, Cora, for doing that. Is Tom Ferry outside?
Yes, he's, yes, he's outside. I was texting that. We're red. Okay.
Here he comes.
We're actually two minutes early for you, Tom. But you can come up whenever you're ready, sir. We're going to review and act on, not act, I'm sorry. This is Tom Ferry. We have some questions for him, but review and discuss road safety issues. And at this point, I'll let Mr. Hull take over. You have some concerns that you want to address?
Well.
Let's wait until he comes up.
Evening.
Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mr. Ferry. Thank you. I want to open my remarks by first saying that the discussion we're having here this evening is in no way a criticism of Mr. Ferry or the Highway Department. They do an outstanding job. Their work with the recent storm is a true testament of the dedication and the hard work of the Highway Department. In regards to safety issues, a town that is always looking at safety is a town that's prepared. And that's important for the safety and well-being of its residents, but also in planning a budget to meet the needs of the community. This evening, we're going to talk about the Brick Street situation. And that is a situation that has been a problem for many, many years. Yet there was no action plan. And usually, the reason was no money. Well, it has reached the point that either people nor cars can pass on that bridge. So we need to take a look at that as a town for especially the safety and access of emergency vehicles for those people who live on the other side of the bridge. I, over the course of the last six months, have heard people express concerns in various streets in town. I myself have borne a victim, if you will, of one of the issues that a couple of other residents have brought up in regards to rotten trees on town property that potentially could fall on cars. In May of this year, I was on Williams Street, had a tree fall on my Jeep, and it was totaled, and I was hospitalized as a result. In Taunton, they have a program that I will share. But again, that costs money to implement any type of program in which personnel are going to be engaged in reviewing, checking streets for various safety issues, trees included. I know Mr. Kennedy is here this evening, and I don't want to hold him up. Several people have brought concerns in regards to the safety and condition of the Brick Street Bridge. So could we address that first? And we have a resident here this evening who has real concerns, and he has come before us this evening to discuss them. So I'd be interested here, your report and the actions that were taken in regards to Brick Street, a little bit of its history and background, and where we go from here.
I wasn't expecting to hear that. Yes. Thank you for coming. That would help with that next step to being here. Long and short, we as a town decided to do an alternative analysis on the bridge to consider replacing the bridge, fixing the bridge, or making a pedestrian bridge, you know, to figure out what we could do with that bridge. Because it's a, being a structure in our town weighs, it has a liability just standing there too. So we can't be ignored. That bridge is very narrow, and it does appear to have some historic significance going along with the mill, the one that's presently there and also downstream. So any projects that could possibly happen with that bridge, we want to utilize remnants of it if possible also. So that's, so we wouldn't be putting something like the Washington Bridge there, you know, same steel and recast and then close abruptly. So our next step, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up a little bit. So we just, as a town, we decided to do the alternative analysis that was funded. The analysis was done. The board, the board hasn't accepted it yet. I don't know if you wanted any more engineering done before you proceed to any next steps. I would think that's one thing you want to do tonight is consider the analysis as presented and then plan a possible public forum for some public input.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what I do suggest. So I believe it was last week, I pulled you to copy this.
Right.
I don't know if you wanted any further information before we go to the next step.
We won't be able to vote on it this evening. Correct me if I'm wrong, because it's not on the agenda.
I agree.
But if, so it's something we definitely should do at our next meeting.
Okay. So regardless of that, there is some serious concerns, as you see in the report. We probably should not, or we should not allow pedestrian traffic or bicycles on it either. There's some voids that have been created in the last few years. And so there's no way of knowing when we could have a problem along. Not just the voids between the bridge itself and the surface, but also the foundation. So this could be a cascade effect when something shifts and whatnot. So it could be pretty catastrophic. So we don't want that to happen.
Now, I just wanted to ask you, so it doesn't all fall on your shoulders. In the decision to make or close the bridge, that wasn't just a decision made by Mr. Ferry. Is that correct? There was a team that made that decision?
Yes, your engineer did this analysis.
Any other town officials?
No, not at this point. I believe this board and myself has the power to close that bridge.
Okay.
I temporarily closed it. I need you guys to act on that. Hopefully, you can act on that soon.
Absolutely.
So we need to stop pedestrians from using, probably even post it, no trespassing. So there's no issues with that until further notice.
So what's it look like today as far as you've barricaded off the?
It's just a simple barricade with a snow fence. We're constructing a little bit better, you know, temporary panels that we use for demolition purposes.
Yeah.
We're constructing them now. We should be able to install them tomorrow.
Okay.
Be no digging involved. We wouldn't have to attach or build them and whatnot, but yet you can't just get by them.
Right.
Right. And then we can use them for other projects in the future.
Okay.
Now, EMS, what type of problems does this create for them in trying to get to people on the other side of the bridge?
So.
Response time.
Apparently, yeah, nine-one-one system is set up where they should know how to respond, whether off a middle or the center. It's a little tricky with your address because it involves both sides of the river. The leave communicators, I think there's a yellow flag in that, so they communicate well. But part of that EMS response, or police response, even snow rainbow, when you go in, you have to go off of town property to turn around or your apparatus has to back all the way out. So that's another safety concern. There's no turnarounds available on both sides. We can access both, all the residents right now, but there's no turnaround without leaving town property.
And those neighbors are okay with?
I don't know. And then and other people, you know, other people on, using the roads, they need to turn around also.
Right.
So that's the here and now and that. So if the board can entertain, I don't know if we can do that tonight, closing pedestrians and bicycles for all use.
By understanding of the open meeting law, that in the case of an emergency, we don't need to post to make a motion.
And probably signage, if no trespassing on the facility, along with the motion, please.
The question is, until further notice?
I think before we make any kind of promotion, you should continue your conversation with what Mr. Hull wants to discuss.
Okay.
And then we can bring any residents up that want to be heard.
Okay.
I just have a question real quick. I'm confused. This has been closed off to actual vehicles for some time. It's only that right now we've closed it to pedestrians.
Correct.
Okay. I was just confused because Mr. Hull was asking about emergency vehicles, but I would think that how long it's been closed, they have some kind of way that they've been getting potentially down there or no to get down there.
Great.
It's not, it doesn't sound like it's ideal, but it's not new to them.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
In regards to the bridge, have you looked into grants or any funding sources?
Annually, yes.
Annually?
Yes. This does not fit in the small bridge program. I haven't for too long. So annually, we're always entertaining any type of funding for any type of restoration of the structure. We haven't been able to have a match yet.
Is that through DOT?
Yes. That's one of them, yes.
And the feds won't?
No.
Help us like they did on Pleasant Street?
It doesn't help that it's not on their inventory anymore. It's been removed from the inventory.
Okay. No, thank you. Main Street. We have a project going on Main Street that is going to be done in phases. And I did receive some questions in regards to the reason why it's taking so long. And one of the things that I think most people in this town that pay taxes understand is that we're against the wall in regards to projects and impacting the tax rate. And the Main Street project is being done in phases, so it doesn't impact the tax rate. And the first phase is completed by the water district. The second phase is, and could you explain to the public, is sidewalks, is it roadwork? What will be the next thing? And when will Highway Department stop?
We have no date start, start date yet. The next phase would be drainage.
Drainage?
And the drainage goes under the sidewalk. So we cannot stop sidewalks till all the drainage is complete. We need to acquire materials. Hopefully, we can do that over the winter and be ready to go.
Yes. And could you explain to the public how funding comes through, through the department, you know, Chapter ninety funding?
So all the funding for that project in particular?
Yes.
Alright, so working with the capital outlay committee and your board itself, we're trying, we also will the payment management plan, we identified a number. We need assistance from the town on top of the Chapter ninety. And that's, we all see that annually. It's roughly two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand to help towards road construction projects. The Chapter ninety program is based on your population, school, and miles of road.
Now, in your discussions with capital outlay, were they looking to fund it from raise and appropriate? Or were they looking to do it through recash?
That, that's a decision the financial team makes annually. It's not set in stone.
Okay.
Because that, the atmosphere of the finances status of the town fluctuates. So the town has a history of being good financial stewards, and they have the ability to have choices.
Now, the completion of that project, I believe as a goal of three years, this, you know, the first year being, is that correct?
Ten, yes. If not sooner, but looks like about three years long.
Three years total. And the sidewalks will be ADA compliant and?
Yes. We don't have a choice. Yes.
Okay. No, thank you. As we talk about Main Street, there have been several issues in regards to Main Street that have come up in regards to highway safety and also maybe some violations of bylaws. And as we work on the road, I don't know if now would be a good time to address those issues. One, we have some people who have used boulders as curbing, protective barriers. Is there any plans for guardrails to replace those large boulders which are on town property?
That, that's possible. I don't believe we can just put guardrails there. That should be engineered. Those two intersections in question should be engineered and looked at as part of the project. Because the type of guardrail and detecting impact is different. Both, both of them are different. They're not the same. And instead of taking effect, the visibility that could be obscuring also by installing a guardrail.
Could we look into that?
Yes.
As part of the, you know, development of a plan?
Yes, like I believe, like we talked like a few months ago, like if I including, like in the Main Street project engineering. Oh, yeah, so that we have an opportunity to address Main Street like in the totality. And so, yeah, so yeah, that, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that has been on our way down and on our way.
Now, who is the engineer for the, for the Titan side, the town side of, of the project?
Oh, they haven't solidified that yet. But we're working on that. We should be wrapped up soon.
Okay. No, thank you. We have an intersection, Elm and Main, that has been the site of numerous accidents, including a fatal. Any opportunity for upgrades of signage? We obviously won't get approval for a light because that comes from the state. Correct me if I'm wrong, right? The state wouldn't pay for a light?
Any consideration on that, those aspects should be engineered. We, we did entertain changing some signage, as you're aware. We did change some signage on Main Street for that intersection. But like we just mentioned just before that last comment, that intersection is one of them that could be looked into out of the Main Street project.
Oh, so it'll be looked at?
Yes.
Okay. I've also received some complaints about at the corner of Main Street and Williams Street with cars parked on that curb on both sides, the Williams Street side, as well as on Main Street, right at the beginning of the intersection. Is there any thoughts of providing signage? Keeping in mind that, and this is an important point, is it seven feet from the road in its town property? Or is it ten?
It's variable.
I'm sorry?
It's variable. It's not consistent. It could be zero, it could be three feet, three, seven feet. It's variable. It's separated.
It's variable?
Yes.
Okay.
Even, even from one property, from one end to the other.
So to determine whether or not stop signs would be, I mean, stop sign, no parking signs would be appropriate, is something that would be evaluated by the police department? Is that?
No, that would be a bylaw change.
Okay.
That's the plus by a bylaw. I'm glad you did bring that up. That's been something on my radar for a few years. I was waiting for the opportunity that the bylaws could be looked at to do it collectively in a town meeting. I have some ideas on that. It's not dependent to section. Section across the street, same problem when you look right, these vehicles there. And rest of Williams Street should be considered. Maybe adding in the bylaws a footage for each intersection on Williams Street, one feet. Either way, it should be looked at for language. I don't know what the next step would got to be. Would it be through this board? Would you have an open forum for that to get some language? Well, there's another way of doing it is the citizen petition. I don't believe your board or by the company needs to do that.
I'd be curious to see your recommendations. If, you know, you said there were other streets and other areas that you had concerns of.
There's some parking considerations throughout the town that needs to be relooked at. They're antiquated. Bylaws, they had their reasons, we need to relook at them, like Northside Mill area. There's some no parking that was created, but through the day when that mill was running, but that's not the same now. Five streets in Northside, we have various locations on Williams Street, not just that one location. But what makes those signs go off is your bylaw.
Could you put together a list of your recommendations and present it to Mr. Mullin? And we'll take a look at it as far as the direction we want to go as a board? Whether we want to do the citizen petition or do it through a, you know, public forum, board of selectmen's.
Peter, do you feel we have enough time to make the end one, something like this?
Yes.
Okay. No, thank you. Regarding trees, well, actually, I, could we, Mr. Kennedy, get back to the Briggs?
If he wants to come up.
Mr. Kennedy, you had said you had some concerns when you spoke prior to the meeting in regards to Brick Street.
Yeah.
Would you like to address them now, or would you like us to continue when you?
That's fine, whatever's convenient for you.
We can address them now. That way you don't have to stay if you don't want to.
Right.
Okay.
So I, I suggest the next step would be to meet with just the residents of Brick Street, or you have an open forum that help all with the whole analysis. And then since Mr. Kennedy's here, maybe get some suggestive dates.
Sure.
I was excited at this here, so we can handle that now.
Absolutely.
I, I still prefer to do a certified mailing to the residents of Brick Street.
Absolutely.
And then, um, I don't know how fast, you want to go to lab pot at Janeburg?
Yeah, for it to be great.
Yeah.
So let me just, a couple of quick points. First, I want to just thank Tom and Jeremlyn, who are putting so responsive today after the bridge was closed yesterday. So you've been really, really kind about that. So temporary issues and the long-term issues. The long-term issue we can take up at the citizens forum, we can talk about at some point. I read the report that you sent, and I think, and the residents will be discussing it over the next months. As we've noticed that people have been looking at the bridge and trying to figure out what to do and so forth. And there's a strong consensus not to open it to vehicular traffic. So I think all of us purchased that property knowing it was a dead industry, liked the quiet in the neighborhood, liked the historic nature of the corner. And so there's no interest among the residents in reopening it to vehicles. There's no real reason to do that. At the same time, access across the bridge is very important to a lot of us, particularly to me, because I bought a property that has half of it on the other side of the river. It's historically been that way, and the only way to access the other side of the property is the bridge. And that also means there are some safety issues. If the police or safety truck comes down one way, they always cross that bridge walking in order to make, get to the other side and do something. So not to mention that, you know, I could go two and a half miles around and blow half my lawn, come back the other way. So it's, it would be a big diminution in the property value of our property, but also of the budding mill property on the other side, not to have that bridge be open to pedestrian traffic. And that would be something that, you know, we would want to then ultimately contest if that was the decision. Because it would be such a dramatic change in the value of the property. But if we, that's offered in the future. I think that it shouldn't have brought me out tonight is that it's the temporary one of what to do while you figure this out. So it's a very complicated plan and a very expensive set of options that have been put forward. And it's, and it's hard to imagine that the town would be in a position to make a final determination and have it implemented anytime soon. Which means that whatever is done with the bridge in the meanwhile is going to be more or less semi-firmment. And so I was surprised that, well, it's just in certain ways to shut the bridge without having noticed anybody when the conditions are the same than it's been that way for years and years. So if there's a way of managing the interim safety issue without completely closing it and walking, that would be really worth taking a look at. Is there a way to put something under the bridge that would give people confidence? The report itself says the bridge is in no imminent danger of collapse. And it certainly doesn't seem that way. Were there a big event and there was some shifting in the bridge, or there was some evidence that it might imminent be collapsed? Then the argument for immediate pedestrian closure would be certainly stronger. But as it is, it looks as firm and feels as stable as it always has to a single person walking across. I can understand the desire to close it for motorcycles, which sometimes do go through there in the summer. Bicycles, it's fine. But for single pedestrian access, people walk their children down there, walk across. It's a very pleasant place for people to walk around, certainly during the warmer weather. So I would just encourage you, before you finally decide to close this upreach to pedestrians, that you consider whether it's possible to close it in such a way posting that it's, you know, at your own risk or no trespassing or whatever would make the town feel comfortable that you've done your due diligence, but allow people to nevertheless not have to climb on the stone wall in order to get to the other side, or try to sneak around on the dam behind the mill in order to get to the other side, trespassing on people's properties, that there would be some way to make it conceivable over the months or even years that it'll take to figure this out. That there would be some way to make it conceivable over the months or even years that it'll take to figure this out, that there would still be some, um, assets also available. There could be even the fence that you're designing, there could be a door that made it clear that we're supposed to open it unless you need it to, or something like that. But, uh, I, I just think the idea of a complete closure is something that would immediately affect people quite adversely. And it's more than seems to be called for by the report that you have in front of you, um, which doesn't suggest that there's any recent core, uh, imagining and imminent, uh, difficulty with the bridge. So those are the concerns I wanted to bring to your attention. I just want to thank you for taking the time to hear me out on.
Sure.
Um, I've had a quick conversation with several of the other residents uh, in the near vicinity of the bridge, all of whom share any concern. Um, and are looking forward to having the opportunity for a larger, more formal discussion of what might be done ultimately. Um, I was a little bit shocked because I'm sure you worry about the idea that a pedestrian bridge costs $600,000 to put there. And, um, I think, uh, all of us thought there has to be a better way to do that. So, uh, the idea of commissioning an additional, um, study or inquiry of options that might be less costly in order to enable at least some pedestrian access would also seem where there's some risk of clearing before treating this report as the final report. I think you should take action.
Okay. You want to address any of that, Tom?
Yes. So, uh, in the appendix A?
Yep.
Page three.
Thank you.
This is the photo of underneath.
Yes.
Thank you. Our photo. It's one that's changed since 2011. And that one worries me quite a bit.
So these were, these are, you have a picture showing your area news?
I have, because I was allowing you to request a state that looks of no, uh, pastry.
And that wasn't there.
It was, the crackers, yeah, but they didn't ship down. And you see the border of it.
Yes.
And these. You're sure that, well, not fully, they look good during there either.
Uh, so you obviously think it's going to collapse at some point.
That's showing you it's in the process. So these are all tallies stoned, they're tied together. It's a dragon wall fitting. There's a ladder, the center barrel, the center support, there's a ladder rocks, there's some voids in that. And there's also some voids on the south wall also. And then a port. Uh, there's one very important thing, I, I, I understand, appreciate the pedestrian part, because I do know a lot of people that enjoy it, that are not unable, but they don't approve the drivers and walkers. Uh, but the important, just by surprise that you said, uh, the structure you have on the other side is on top of this structure. Like that part of your building is on, it's complicated on, on, uh, how to handle this moving forward.
So that's not my, that's, I manage that property, but I don't own that property. So yes, the mill itself sits on top of this foundation. Um, I should also say the foundation wall that continues on the south side of, of the river and is the, is the structural wall underneath the bridge that continues in our property on both sides.
Right.
And we have repeatedly shored that up to fill the voids and had local basins come and hammer stones into shore, shore it up.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
Wow.
So there's this, almost a five-foot stone wall from the 18th century that's holding our whole property from collapsing into the river. It continues under the bridge.
Right.
And it has required some attention from time to time from the person who knows his stones.
He does, right. Uh, stone walls are not fine, they, they give you quite maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
And you see them throughout the town, they kind of fall and whatnot.
Right.
Right.
Uh, but through this whole problem, you can tell there's maintenance involved. And it's due diligence, yes.
Okay. Now, the decision to close the bridge to pedestrian traffic. I see pictures from Beta. Is there a written report?
Yes, that report I shared with you, it's explicitly said to close it for pedestrian traffic.
So there is.
Suggestive.
Where? I didn't see anything in that report. Were there recent developments that have led to that decision? Or has it just been the late, the most recent? The most recent, uh, inspection?
Most recent inspection.
Okay. This has been a problem that's been going on for a while.
Thirty-five years.
So, all right.
Well, no, no, I mean, to the point.
That's effective, Rita. So this is from Beta's recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. Based on the age and condition of the existing bridge, Beta recommends removal of the bridge and to install a new, pre-fabricated steel pedestrian bridge. A hydraulic analysis should be performed to confirm the existing opening can safely convey a design storm flow due to the narrow approach, rolling widths, and Beta does not recommend replacing the bridge to facilitate two-way vehicle traffic. Until one of the options presented in this report can be, Beta recommends closing the site to pedestrians used due to their structural's age, cracking in the, in the clatter stones, the big ones I pointed out to you, and the percentage of voids in the stone piers. Although imminent failure is not anticipated, the structure is in poor condition and well beyond its useful design.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, would Mr. Mullin like to coordinate with Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Ferry? A meeting, whether it be
I think that would be.
A planning session between the three of you and a forum? And then come back with us with a timetable and we can vote on it?
We, we could do one, two things. I see you could do a working, working forum with just residents, or you want to open it up to the town?
No, I'd say just the residents.
The residents of Briggs Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, like we do have, yeah, like, I mean, especially, oh, yeah, like, I mean, oh, yeah, I mean, especially with the, uh, yeah, oh, yeah, like especially with the foundational issues and the immediate.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, like our immediate area issues, like do you think? Oh, yeah, we have to have a real resident focused. Oh, you know, uh, come first and then we can drop you there.
Okay.
Hmm, interesting. Right, yeah. If we have something ready for the annual, that will be a time for more important.
Yes.
Okay.
Could I suggest some things, some dates, so we can do this up? Yeah, so if you want, if the three of us wanted to meet, if you have a lot of suggestions, the three of us get together. It would be wonderful if you do it next week. You've got some time. Um, if I could propose for the meeting of the, um, residents, something like the, the Friday, the 12th of January, or then I'm afraid I'm actually overseas until February 5th. Oh, uh, the 12th, uh, the 12th would work. Also a Friday evening, so it's easier for them to. Okay, that's even better, actually.
Yeah.
So for me, what, what does this meeting look like? It's just Mr. Kennedy, yourself, me, or the?
Uh, yeah, yeah, like another residence, like a Briggs, another Briggs Street resident, right?
Will you meet with the Board of Selectmen for this forum, or? I was just thinking of an organizational meeting with the three of you someday, you know?
We're gonna do three of us, then I would take, why don't we do it next week sometime, whenever it's due for you guys?
Yeah. And then come together, you know, for a plan to come before us to decide what, how you want to go forward, or is a forum meeting, if it's just the residents of Briggs Street, who will be there?
Yeah.
What public safety officials you want, if you could all, you know, plan that and then come back with us with the date that you want to meet?
I, I would say leave it open for now until you can, till you come back to work and then establish a date.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I only have, I only have, uh, one other day off anyways.
Right.
Uh, I'm not going on vacation anymore.
Not to residents, not to rush this.
Yep.
Say we get started until February on the meeting stuff. What's the latest we should have something ready for one?
Beginning of March.
The rest things, I just, so we can think ahead a bit.
Uh, yeah, we should have, uh, yeah, like we should have, oh, yeah, like we, uh, yeah, we should have a warrant, I could propose by the first part of April, the latest. Uh, I would propose we, we aim to try to have the residents meeting the first week of February and the, the three of us try to meet next week.
Set this, yeah, set the stage next.
Yeah, yeah, they're doing it.
Okay, no, thank you. Um, regarding Elm Street, I, I had a issue, two issues. Um, at the top of Elm Street, 1400 section, um, towards 138, there was question about a missing speed sign. Um, that had been there and was knocked over at, at some point during plowing. Um, good night, thank you. Is that a posted section?
There is.
Okay.
I didn't, wasn't prepared for that question.
Well, no, no.
I, I wrote it down, I'll check out the speed sign.
Yes, and if it is, could we replace it? If it's not, then?
Yeah, I believe Elm Street is a post-regulated posted road.
Okay. And then, I'm not sure what the intent was, but on Elm Street, at the beginning, the entrance from 138, there is a double yellow line that is half covered. And it's confusing, half-black topped over. Is it supposed to be there or not? The double solid, is it supposed to be there or not be there?
That section is one way, and
Right.
the lines are painted, it usually starts at 10 at night until about 3:00 in the morning. Uh, so that short section of Elm Street was painted accidentally years back, so that
It was black.
Black, you mentioned, it's just black paint to black out. Uh, I'm not sure you would want, um, a day to go in there and remove the paint. So we paint black over it instead of making a rumble strip.
Okay. Well, that'd be a decision, you know?
Right.
What do you feel would be best?
I, I, I don't think it's a huge issue.
Okay.
They need to be on the right-hand side when they crest the hill anyways, because you have a two-way traffic at that point.
Right. So, so leaving it yellow would be?
Just don't paint it and let it just fade away.
Fade away. Okay. Um, the trees. Do we have a tree, um, review program about trees that are close to the road? Um, some people that express concern about dead trees um, along several roads, Cedar Street, Williams Street, that are a potential risk of falling?
Yes, the, the program is you let them know how to contact the tree ward, give them his phone number.
Still the best bet, if the public notices a tree, would be to contact you?
Absolutely. Especially if it's urgent, absolutely.
All right. Rather than, you know, going around and you imagine, do they mark, like in Taunton, if they see a tree that's at risk, you'll go through Taunton, you'll see the white Xs through the trees, which usually mean that they're scheduled to be cut down.
Yeah, at, at that point, they're probably scheduled, and that's for a contractor to tie you.
Yes. Do you contract that out, or you do that in-house?
We, we've, since we acquired a used electric truck, we've been tackling our trees.
Yourself, okay.
That's why they need to contact me directly.
Thank you. Um, the other two issues have to do with Center Street and Williams, and they're more a police issue. You know, there's been some concern about speeding on Williams, that's Center Street and Maple Street. Uh, especially in springtime on Maple Street. Um, and Center and Williams Street intersection, there've been several accidents there. And there's a visibility problem that appears to exist. Um, how would that be addressed? Or can it be with shrubs blocking visibility?
Aware of a visibility hazard there. Monica, we had one last spring, it's been taken care of since then.
Okay.
I'm not aware of it at present, uh, hazard there.
Do you, from your end, do you see any, um, hazards that in that intersection that you could address? So it'd be more of a police issue?
Yes, it seems to be more of an enforcement issue in that area. Yes.
Mr. Mullin, could you speak to Chief Nichols about that? And that's all I have. No, thank you. I want to thank the board.
Thanks, Tom.
Before you go, Tom, those, those boulders that are on town property. They, they're on town property or?
We have three locations, three intersections.
That somebody put them there?
Yes.
So shouldn't they be removed?
Uh, that actually falls under the control of the Selectmen.
Okay, then listen.
Two of them are protected really close to a house, a ceiling that's going to protect the house, but they're not press rated and
No.
we could be liable.
Right.
Those two are main, two intersections on Main Street should be engineered. Uh, the other one, uh, probably a strong letter from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Action's taken.
All right, I think we'll have to do that, because, uh, it's just an act waiting to happen.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I wonder if you can, Mike?
Yes, no, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Before we take any action on Briggs Street, we're going to wait until after the forum, correct?
Yes.
Uh, except for the, you already did the pedestrian part?
No, we haven't, right?
Well, when we're closing the bridge.
I, I, I think has to
The pedestrians?
Has to stay closed until.
I will, I will recognize that.
Yeah.
We do have a recommendation from an engineer in writing.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So I don't know, get set.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, like would be, like, would be tricky, like, and liable as well.
Sure. I, I'm not ready to, to say it should be opened.
Yeah.
As much as it's an inconvenience, there's a major safety issue. Um, unfortunately, those that live there, uh,
Huge inconvenience.
Using huge inconvenience, but safety has to prevail.
Do we need to make a motion on that, uh?
No.
No?
Okay. I think we did.
Pedestrians and
To add to no trespassing.
Done.
I really need to be instructed from
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so I, I would like to put up a little bit better fencing inside and saying that it is closed to all.
Okay.
Yes.
Sure.
And no trespassing, obviously, we don't want, we don't have all, so.
Oh, climbing over the sign or walking around it?
Yes.
So.
So Chairman?
Yep.
I'd like to make the motion that we direct the Highway Superintendent to close the Briggs Street Bridge to pedestrian traffic and to post it, no trespassing until further notice.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carrington, aye. Thank you for taking that.
This one thing, the gentleman did it, mentioned that, I guess, sometimes EMS walks across there. Is there any way that we can let them know that? Other than right now, finding out that they will no longer be able to walk across there?
Yes, I could do that. I did share this with the both chiefs.
Okay.
And just get, letting them know that their input will be needed in the near future.
Okay.
Prepare for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, announcements.
Um, the town parking ban, no person shall park a motor vehicle between the hours of 12:00 midnight to 6:00 a.m. on any street from November 1st of each year to April 1st of the following year. Police will take notice. The Town of Dyson Food Bank will be held next on January 20th, 2024, located at Town Hall, 979 Somerset Avenue in the lower level.
Okay, great. I know for the Town Administrator's Report, um, the December edition of the, of the Dyson Digest, Dyson Digest is available at Sign up for the news alerts on the town website to receive updates directly. And then we all have in our packet the, um, Plan B Construction Company, uh, with, um, dated December 6th, 2023, for the proposal for, um, the railing and, uh, stairs going up to, uh, the Town Hall from the parking lot.
Yes, and, uh, yeah, so, uh, I, I will Yes, and, uh, yeah, uh, 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 we're, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, we're for like almost eighteen thousand dollars, like, under budget.
Right.
We thought, and so like, we, uh, we, uh, yeah, uh, oh, yeah, we, uh, 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 yeah, we should be we should be able to have everything mobilized for that, it's great.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, no problem, thank you.
Any questions, guys?
No.
Okay, great. Uh, the Selectmen Reports, uh, my, uh, two committees have not met, uh, they don't meet until next week, so, um, Nicole, I know you said you had one that you wanted to discuss.
Yes, um, so we, I have, none of my committees have met, but once again, I'm here to talk about the trash bags.
Yes.
Um, so I did get to speak with the Health Department in regards to the bags and the new, um, company that we went with, they've been really great, they came and they took the bags, they brought us new bags. I mean, there's still gonna be some bags in circulation that are having issues, the new issue, um, and they're looking into why that happened, so, um, they are working with us and from what I've heard, the department is happy with our new organization or with, um, it just happened to be unlucky.
That run.
Yes, and as you speak for, if you have a bag that has an issue, bring it to the Health Department and we'll switch it out.
Great, thank you, Mr. Ho.
Uh. Last Thursday, Conservation Commission met. The major topic of discussion was very lengthy meeting.
Your fights?
Was, no, not this time, well. There was an issue, uh, with another project, but the main discussion was Forest Hills and the proposed one hundred and thirty-five houses, uh, something that is, planning board has put on hold. The Turney Glass is attempting to resurrect
Mm-hmm.
the plan. Um, it has passed the Taunton Conservation Commission. It came before the Dayton Conservation Commission and it decision was tabled. There are three items that need to be addressed. And if they're addressed, then legally, conservation is going to be in a position where they'll have to approve it. One has to do with a animal access to a vernal pool that's in the middle of the proposed development. Because you have the vernal pool, you put houses all around it while animals have a difficult time accessing it, the egress. Second issue, uh, has to do with a culvert. And its construction and its location is, um, in an area that they're asking, conservation is asking them to move it. And the third issue is more of a stormwater issue, and that has to do with the type of drainage that will be used, and that's more of an engineering issue that, uh, um, would, would, no, um, Sampson, Sampson, um, would probably have to decide.
Yeah, I, yeah, probably the beta group on that took a concom, not because they are the engineer for the, uh, concom on that project.
How about if there is a conflict between two engineers? Does Weston and Sampson decide that?
Oh. Hopefully, we don't have that and we'll leave it at that.
Okay, but that's, right now, you have Conservation's engineer and, um, Dayton Industries engineer having a difference of opinion on that. So they had talked about a peer review, so it's been tabled.
Okay.
Next month. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Uh, there is no old business to discuss, so we're gonna move right on to new business. Review, Discuss and Act, Non-Union Cost of Living Adjustments.
Yes. So, um, so, yeah, like, we, uh, we have, uh, we have been, we, uh, we have been, we, uh, we have been bringing budget by law, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that's at the very beginning of our budget process, uh, we have to provide, uh, uh, we have, we have to provide direction to departments with regards uh, we, oh, yeah, with regards to proposed rating features for non-union employees. And so, um, so it's for planning, uh, so for, uh, 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 planning for, uh, flight twenty-five. Uh, like, I, and, uh, I got, yeah, uh, 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 yeah, I'm proposing, uh, 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 yeah, I'm proposing it this year. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, non-union wage increase of two and a half percent. Um, and, uh, uh, yeah, yeah, uh, yeah, and I have reached out to other, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, right, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I tried, I reached out to other community area. And, um, and the consensus was, uh, 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 yeah, like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, in the, oh, oh, like, in the consensus was that everyone was running between two or three.
Okay, uh, does the board want to dis- uh, discuss on it? Any discussion?
The only discussion, question I have is, do you have the money and the budget for this?
Um. That, 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 that will be part of, uh, yeah, oh, yeah, that will be part of, uh, of like twenty-five budget process, but I believe we do based on our revenues, yes.
Any concerns, Nicole?
No.
Lynn, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, so a motion on the floor to accept the two point five percent?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve non-union employee
Uh, rate increases.
Wage increase of two point five percent for non-contracted and applicable contracted employees. As such, employment contracts allow for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five.
Any discussion?
I'll, I'll second that.
Second that, don't you? Uh, this is, uh, motion in a second by Nicole, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye, thank you. Review, Review Discuss and Act on Annual Common, Common Vicuula License Renewals. Um, we received a update, uh, from Leanne this afternoon, and, uh, did you guys see it too?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna make a motion, uh, to approve all those at one time, uh, I guess I just should read them. Seventeen twelve Corporation doing business as seventeen twelve Tavern, uh, eighteen eighty-one County Street, Alice's Last Stop, nineteen oh one County Street, CNN Pizza, nineteen sixty-five County Street, Dayton County, County Diner, Country Diner, two thirty-eight Main Street, IBDIL Lighthouse of Pizza, four twenty Somerset Avenue, ATKF LLC, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, four twenty Somerset Avenue, Jesse's Diner LLC, two thirty, twenty thirty-five Winter Street, Mannheim Remarketing Incorporated, doing business as Mannheim, New England, one twenty-three Williams Street, and Taunton Yuck Club, twenty-one twenty-five Water Street. Uh, is there a motion on the floor to approve those?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual common vicuula license renewals as presented this evening.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Review Discuss and Act, Annual Dealist License Renewals, five oh eight Customs and Collisions on nineteen forty County Street, Costa Truck and Auto, six sixty-five Middle Street, L and L Used Car Parts, twenty ninety-one Cedar Street, and Mannheim Remarketing, one twenty-three Williams Street.
Excuse me, Chairman, can I give you an update on that?
Sure, you have one?
Yes, um, so to my knowledge, five oh eight Customs and Collisions has not, um, submitted all their paperwork.
Okay.
Yeah, I did attempt to call them just before I came into this meeting, um, but I wasn't able to get in touch with them.
Okay.
So I'm just recommending that the board approves the other three. And if you would like, you could, um, vote to approve contingent, approve five oh eight contingent upon receiving the paperwork.
How long have they had to get it in?
Since beginning of December.
Okay. Um, so is there a motion on the floor to approve the three with, uh, a contingent on five oh eight Customs and Collisions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual dealer license renewals of Costa's Truck and Auto, six sixty-five Middle Street, L and L Used Car Parts, two thousand ninety-one Cedar Street, and Mannheim Remarketing, one twenty-three Williams Street.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Peter Cameron is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve contingent upon submittal of all required paperwork of five oh eight Customs and Collision, nineteen forty County Street.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Um. They have until what, January first or December thirty-first?
December thirty.
Which is coming up, because we're open tomorrow and then closed, so they have until tomorrow to get there or they're in violation. Wow, they're really pushing it, okay, uh, Review Discuss and Act, Annual Entertainment License Renewal for seventeen twelve Corporation doing business as seventeen twelve Tavern on eighteen eighty-one County Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual entertainment license renewal, seventeen twelve Corporation doing business as seventeen twelve Tavern, eighteen eighty-one County Street.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron is an aye. Review Discuss and Act, Reese's Gas Station, Reese's Gas, transfer of license, uh, this is on five fifty-six Somerset Avenue. Who's it being transferred to?
The gentlemen are here tonight.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Sorry to keep you here all this time.
It's fine, we enjoyed it.
Yeah, you learned a lot, right?
So they have submitted all the required paperwork, um, after talking with Jim Agia, he said he wouldn't need to do an inspection. Everything's staying the same as far as the layout, the number of cars, um, so.
Okay, great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, is there a motion on the floor?
Well, actually, I need to know the name of the company that we're transferring the licenses to.
Dayton Service Center.
I'm sorry?
Dayton Service Center.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve the transfer of license from Reese's Gas of five fifty-six Somerset Avenue to Dayton Service Center.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron is an aye. Prove all of the warrants.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Dayton pay the warrant for December.
Sorry, Lynn.
Happy New Year.
Happy New, thank you. December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Article twenty-six A dash twenty-four, one hundred twelve thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Item twenty-six B dash twenty-four, fifty-four thousand, four hundred ten dollars and eighty-six cents.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Dayton pay the warrant of December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Item twenty-seven A dash twenty-four, one hundred thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and fifteen cents. Item twenty-seven B dash twenty-four, seventy-two thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron is an aye. Uh, acknowledgements, there's none. Correspondence letter from Christopher McGee, Fire Chief, regarding appointment of one new Call firefighter, Logan Temental. Uh, this is to the board, dear board, I am writing this letter to inform you that effective January first, two thousand twenty-four, I will be appointing one new member to Call firefighter ranks. The new member's name is Logan Temental, Logan has been a town resident, resident since a very young age. He will be entered into the next Call slash firefighter academy offered by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to get his pro board firefighter certification, certification. Any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me. And signed by the chief. Um, any, uh, discussion?
The only question I have, I understand there's a strong chief law, that he has the ability to appoint him.
Yes.
But don't we have to vote to pay him? Or is that just something we do when we sign the warrant?
Yeah, like, that happens when, uh, you sign and approve the warrants.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, so is there a motion on the floor to accept this letter? Do we have to, we don't have to vote?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Okay, uh, there's no public input or is there? Anybody? No? Uh, then minutes of, uh, of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes on November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Uh, motion for adjournment?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron is an aye.